This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6 et sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Song.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus. Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's no proclamations tonight. Approval of the minutes, Cow Meeting of 2/23/2015, the regular meeting of 2/24/2015. May I have a motion, please, for those?
Okay, just on that, Councilmember Pataglia was absent.
Okay, so everybody but Councilmember Pataglia. Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Absent.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Song.
Stand.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Now the Cow and Regular Meeting of 3/23/2015 and the Special Meeting of 3/31/2015.
You might want to do the both of them separate.
Separate, okay. The Cow and Regular Meeting of 3/23/2015.
Yes.
Have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Song.
Stand.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And now the Special Meeting of 3/31/2015. May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Song.
Stand.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Thank you. City Manager's Report, please.
First item, number one, Lot C Titlelands update. The grant application has been received by NJDEP and it is currently being reviewed, so they've not acknowledged our application. It would suggest it would probably be three to six months to get an answer.
Whatever is that?
Yard waste. The council did authorize the twice-a-week pickup, so the notices are being prepared to be sent out to the residents. Also, yard waste is an ongoing collection throughout the week, so please leave your items at the curb. We are attempting to do everything we can to try to stay on schedule with the yard waste Item number three has to do with the capital improvement plan. The staff has submitted information and Jim Mengen and myself have been working on both a short and longer-range plan for capital improvements. Jim has put together a PowerPoint presentation hitting on the budget goals on trying to attract investors to the city. He will touch on recent note sales. He will then highlight proposed infrastructure improvements on capital funds and then bonding on larger projects. Remember, our goal is to continue to provide services and maintain our infrastructure while attracting business as well as stabilizing taxes. So with that, Jim, I'll turn this section over to you.
Okay. Jim, you want the lights out?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. It's fine. Might be okay.
Might have to lower them a little. I won't put the lights out.
Put the lights.
The projector on? Yes?
Yeah, that's good. What we're looking to do tonight is take care of a couple of different things, you know, and because it's varied and because there's a lot of information, we figured the best way to do this would be to tie everything together into one PowerPoint presentation, okay? There are some things that we statutorily have to do. There are a lot of decisions that you're going to be making tonight in the business portion of the meeting, so this will give you a background on those. And then, in the next couple of months, now that we've got the budget done, you're going to be called on to be making a lot of decisions, and they're going to come pretty quickly. So we figured the best way was to give you a grand overview, all right, as this stuff starts coming at you, right, because it is going to come fairly rapid-fire over the next few months, you know? And this is what happens once the budget's out of the way. A lot of this is tied to the budget presentation that was done back in March, and that's because a lot of this is just a continuation of the same discussion. So you are going to hear a lot of concepts, you know, that we did in the budget, because understand that the capital portion is just another part of the budget, you know, whereas the budget itself takes care of the operating expenses, which are for one year, capital is your five- and six-year plan, okay? All right, so Hackensack 2.0, this is me, I'm sorry, my, in a former life, I was into computers, and 2.0 just always represented a whole new way of thinking, and that's what we're trying to do here. We always start with the mission statement, and we said this during the budget presentation, that our mission is to improve the quality of life for Hackensack residents. And if you remember during the budget presentation, we defined quality of life, saying that improving or increasing services while simultaneously stabilizing taxes. We can easily improve or increase services just by increasing the budget, by increasing taxes. We can easily stabilize taxes, all we need to do is decrease services. The trick is to do both simultaneously, all right? That's what our mission is. To do that, it's a four-step process. We touched on step one with the budget, but today we'll run through the entire four-step process. First step is making the city attractive to investors, okay? And if you remember during the budget presentation, we defined investors as anyone who's made the decision to invest here in Hackensack. Specifically, we talked about developers. These are people take an undeveloped, an unimproved piece of property, improve it, and also homeowners, people have made the investment, have already made the investment here, and what we want to do is convince those people to increase their investment, fix up their house, that kind of stuff. If that happens, okay, if people increase their investment, homeowners, if developers make the investment here, that's going to increase our ratable base, okay? As improvements are made, net valuations go up, our ratable base increases. As our ratable base increases, the tax rate decreases, okay? But if you remember, our goal wasn't to lower taxes. Our goal was to increase services and stabilize taxes, okay? So what'll happen is if we can accomplish this, the fourth step, we'll allow an increase to the tax levy, which means more services, because we'll be increasing the budget, without increasing the tax rate. That gives you the stable taxes. That's what we're trying to accomplish. It's not easy, it's difficult, but it's the one thing that we have to keep remembering over and over again. We say it a lot, you know, because it does kind of drive every decision that we make, all right? That's why we said, step number one, which was our budget goal, make the city attractive to investors. And we need to do that a number of different ways, you know? Some of the ways you can do it, I apologize, that's a little bit smaller than I thought it was, among the ways you do it is you begin by making your tax structure fairer, okay? And that's done through fair assessments. If your assessments are fair, you're going to be taxed fair, okay? And also fair collections. We don't want the tax-paying public to be carrying the burden for the delinquent taxpayers, right? We also need to improve the city's creditworthiness, okay? Just as a developer may drive around the city, if he's, you know, contemplating making an investment here, guarantee they're taking a drive through our financial records, okay? And they're looking to see if this is a worthwhile investment or not. So we need to improve the city's creditworthiness. We need to provide incentives to develop, something that sets us apart from other municipalities. We need to improve the city infrastructure, make the city safer, make the city cleaner, and improve the opportunities for recreation, leisure, and culture. These are all the things that we need to do to make the city attractive to investors. And coincidentally, every department in municipal government has one of these functions as their primary responsibility. Every department is responsible for trying to make the city attractive to investors. Now, like I said, we're trying to accomplish a few things here tonight, all right? So what we're going to do is first talk about the financial structure of the city, all right? So that's this first part. We need to make the tax structure fair. We need to do that through fair assessments, okay? We said this earlier, that we need to do a citywide reassessment in 2015. Later on in the business portion of the meeting, you're going to be voting on a number of resolutions that are going to accomplish this. First, you'll have a special emergency appropriation resolution. What that does is that gives us the spending authorization to start the reassessment. Tonight, you're also going to be voting to adopt a special emergency appropriation ordinance. What that does is that allows us to take the cost of this program and spread it out over five years, okay? The special emergency appropriation puts the money into the 2016 budget, and the ordinance spreads it from the 2016 through the 2019 budget. After we do the citywide reassessment in 2015, which will then be in effect for the 2016 tax year, we're going to do subsequent annual rolling assessments. We'll do one-fourth of the property every year, 2016, 17, 18, and 19. By the end of this five-year plan, every property will then be reassessed twice. And what that'll do is that'll greatly curtail the successful tax appeals. It's what we need to do to stop the tax, the new tax appeals from being filed. We're still working on the financing of paying off the old tax appeals. This is the plan that'll stop the new tax appeals, okay? Once the tax structure is fairer, or not once, actually simultaneously, we need to work on our collections, make that fair. And we've already done a few things that you may not be aware of, we'll be doing more things tonight, and some things that we're contemplating. For example, one of the things we want to do is send out estimated tax bills in the third quarter. Don't know if that's ever been done in Hackensack, it definitely hasn't been done in the last 10 years. The reason for this is that we've adopted our budget, okay? The school board has adopted their budget, okay? Say the county adopts its budget. We can't send out tax bills until the tax rate has been certified, which requires an action of the state and it requires an action of the county. Bergen County, probably because of the number of municipalities, is notoriously late in certifying its tax rate. Every year, in Bergen County, probably otherwise, the third-quarter tax bills go out late, okay? That's a cash flow problem for us, because we don't have an amount in the surplus that we're sitting on, okay? It curtails cash coming in. It's also inconvenient for residents. A lot of residents go on vacation, and they really want to take care of their third-quarter tax bill. Before they go on vacation, they can't. They call us and they say, "Where's my bill? It's due August 1st." We say, "Yeah, we know, it's late, we haven't gotten the rate." The next question is always, "When is it coming?", and our answer is always, "We don't know." Okay? What estimated third-quarter bills do is instead of getting a bill in August, like you normally do with the four quarters, you get a bill in August with the third quarter only. Once the tax rate is certified, we send out another bill in the fourth quarter, okay, called the reconciled bill. Third quarter is estimated, fourth quarter is reconciled, it'll have the fourth quarter as well as the first two quarters of 2016 as well. We're also looking at, we're investigating the possibility of an accelerated tax sale in 2015. At some point, you'll be called on, you know, to make that decision. Once staff is done investigating it and we deem whether it's worthy or not, we'll present it to the city manager, and if he agrees, he in turn will present it to you. An accelerated tax sale, just a tax sale basically is for delinquent taxes of the prior year. An accelerated tax sale is for delinquent taxes in the current year. We've already added the ability to view your tax bills online. You go onto the city website, go on the tax collectors' section, and you can look at, I think it's a three-year history of your tax bills online. That exists today. We're also working on the ability to not only view your taxes, but to pay your taxes online via credit card. We're not ready with that yet, we are very close, though. In terms of improving the city's creditworthiness, which falls to the finance department, you have to understand that our last credit rating was done in 2013, and we're a Moody's AA3. AA3 is good. Well, AA3 is not bad, okay? Certainly not great. My opinion, there's a lot of potential for improvement there. Couple of management changes, which we've already implemented, we can easily get that to AA2, and I can really see us as being a AA1. AA1, one step below a AAA, okay? To give an example, we held our note sale on April 23rd, about two weeks ago. Note sale for $4,36,857. That was awarded to TD Bank with an interest rate of 0.45%, which is an excellent, excellent interest rate. If you look at our recent note sale history, you see in April 2015, .45%. Last November, that was the note sale that we did for the tax appeal refunding, it's .5%. April 2014, .54%. The July one was a negotiated sale, that's using the same rate. But if you notice, the interest rates that we're getting are coming down, and this at a time when interest rates are actually climbing. What that says is that the city's on the right track financially, because this comes from the investment community, which, trust me, is the most difficult community to try and prove your creditworthiness. I could sit here and tell you that finances are great, sure, I work here, you know, I have a vested interest. These people are the most objective when it comes to this. We really may want to think long and hard about seeking a new credit rating, all right, if things continue along this way, all right? Because it's the credit rating, among other things, that developers are going to look for, to see how worthy our, is a municipality of an investment. The other thing is with this note sale is I'm required by statute to report at the next council meeting, so I kind of killed two birds with one stone there. That's the financial aspect of making the city attractive. We also, as I said, we need to provide the incentives to develop, okay? Again, sets us apart from everybody else. In this respect, we're looking at the Main Street State Street conversion project, the two-way conversion project. Not ready for an update yet, but we will be coming out with an update on that very soon. In addition, we've also been doing a lot of work on a tax abatement policy. Again, not ready for an update yet, but we will be coming out with an update on that very soon, all right? These two things are going to, what, make developers look at Hackensack as opposed to looking at Paramus or looking at TNEC. Everything else on that list, improving the city infrastructure, making the city safer, cleaner, improving opportunities for recreation, leisure, and culture, all falls into the area of capital improvement and investments, and we've talked a lot about capital, all right? A lot of infrastructure has unfortunately been neglected, all right? We did a $4.1 million bond ordinance last year for the sewer separation. David announced that a couple of meetings ago that the DEP granted us a million-dollar principal forgiveness. Take out a $4.1 million loan, pay back $3.1 million, okay? We need to make that investment into our infrastructure. We need to show investors that we're willing to invest in our own community. Now, in keeping with our commitment to the fair tax rate, all capital improvements and investments have to stay within our existing budget, okay? We can't do all these capital improvements and raise taxes. That's not what the mission is. We need to do the capital improvements, absolutely, and we need to do them within our, the budget that we've set. Put another way, no new taxes for capital improvements. Again, another tall order, but it is what we need to accomplish, and that's what we're working toward. Said another way, what we need to do is invest in Hackensack through capital improvements. That absolutely has to happen. But we need to plan for the financing of the improvements, so that there's no increase to the budget. We've already made the commitment to address the tax appeal issue. We know, we saw that for the 2015 budget, we know that we have to increase the debt service budget for the tax appeals, okay? Just because we're increasing the budget, the debt service budget for tax appeals, doesn't give us a free ride to increase the debt service budget for everything. So we need to make the investments and minimize the increase to the debt service budget to only the tax appeals. Now, we've got immediate capital needs, and when I say immediate, I mean a couple of months ago, that immediate, all right? We talked about road improvements. Now, so far in 2015, we've already authorized a number of roads to be improved. We've gone out to bid already on Grand Avenue. We have the bid scheduled, I forget the date, it is in May, for these other roads. That's already happening. In addition, in the next bond ordinance, which we want to do as soon as possible, what we want to do is the balance of Grand Avenue, so that when we're done, the entire length of Grand Avenue will be redone, Porter Street, and a fairly substantial portion of Lewis Street. That's what we want to do this year. In addition to the roads, oops, okay? In addition to the roads, again, I apologize for the size of the font, there are building improvements and equipment that we need to undertake as well, okay? We know the City Hall roof needs repair, the clerk keeps getting rained on, okay? We need to work on firehouse renovations. We're just about done with the project on Station 2 on Summit Avenue, but to be honest, all the firehouses really need repair. We're not going to complete all the repairs in one year. What we need to do is get on a program of regular renovations to the firehouses. We need a salt dome. We've been talking about it for two years. It's still pretty inconceivable that a city the size of Hackensack doesn't have a salt dome. It seems like the winters are just getting worse, and the problem is that as salt gets more scarce, we have to rely on others, all right? And we can't, we can't continue to do that. We want to replace the baseball scoreboard in Faschini Park, okay? We want to, we want to implement a SCADA system, not that we want to, the DEP is requiring us, to implement a SCADA system for our sewer pump stations, which has to do with the monitoring to prevent the sewer overflows. We're going to put generators in all the firehouses and the M&amp;M Building, and this is by way of a grant that we received from FEMA. It's a grant. We still need to appropriate the money, because it's a reimbursement grant, so we need to appropriate the money, buy the generators in order to be reimbursed from FEMA. And we want to upgrade the computer server here in, here in City Hall. In addition, we need to make some vehicle purchases for our Public Works Department. Last year, we had identified a real problem with the vehicle fleet in the police department, a critical problem. A lot of the cars were, or a lot of the police vehicles were old, many of them were unsafe. We tackled that problem head-on. Last year, we added 22 police vehicles to our fleet. We need to make the same type of investment in our Public Works fleet. Not going to replace 22 vehicles in one year, that's for sure, but we need to start, okay? We're looking at the financing of a new street sweeper, a new dump truck, and a new pickup truck. Yeah, these are the immediate capital needs that we're looking at. There we go. Estimates for this be about, about $1.5 million, okay? Of the $1.5 million, we're going to be looking to use our own capital cash for a half-million and issue bonds and notes for another million. This financing scheme, this mixture of cash and debt, does stay within our existing debt service budget, okay? We wouldn't need to increase the budget now or in the future for these capital needs. Now, this is only one year, okay? Capital is an ongoing program every year. If that was the end of our capital needs, we'd be fine, but we know we have other needs, we know we have other significant needs, all right? Among them, the Main Street State Street conversion project, which is a significant capital investment. We know that we need to finish renovations at the Performing Arts Center, okay? We're talking about the construction of a sports dome facility, okay? We can't consider our current capital without remembering that we're looking into these future capital needs as well. And we really need to make renovations to the M&amp;M Building, okay? It's very much underutilized, and it's got an unbelievable amount of potential. Now, all of these are big-ticket items, none of these are small, okay? And the financing for these all has to stay within our existing debt service budget. That's our challenge, that's what we're trying to accomplish. We're looking at all of this against the backdrop of no increase in taxes. So what's the timeline that we're looking at? For this, in the month of May, we're looking to do two ordinances, and that would fund the road improvements, the building and equipment purchases that we talked about, and the DPW purchases. You see, a bond ordinance and a capital ordinance. You'll remember the difference between the two is that a capital ordinance uses our own cash, whereas a bond ordinance authorizes debt. In June, we'll be looking to also do a capital ordinance for the Main Street State Street conversion project. Now, that's a plan. Plan's not written in stone, but we're looking to try and accomplish the financing of that project using cash. If we can do that, that demonstrates our commitment and how serious we are to our redevelopment effort. We'll also be looking at a bond ordinance to finish the Performing Arts Center and potentially to fund the sports dome facility. That's going to happen in June. In July, then we roll right into our round of 2016 tax appeal financing, just like we did last year, and just like last year, it'll probably be in the area of nine to 10 million, okay? So just to recap, all right, because I threw a ton of information at you all at once. Again, our mission is to improve the quality of life for Hackensack residents, more residents with stable taxes at the same time. We need to make the city attractive to investors, and we do that first through our finances, citywide reassessment, which you'll be taking on action tonight, the estimated third-quarter bills, which you'll be taking action on tonight, and we're going to investigate the possibility of this accelerated tax sale, okay? In addition, we're looking to make a capital investment in infrastructure through our road improvement program, the building and equipment acquisitions that we talked about, and the vehicle purchases for Public Works. We're looking at making a capital investment in redevelopment through the Main Street State Street two-way conversion project, okay? And finally, we're looking to make a capital investment in the community, through renovations to the Performing Arts Center, renovations to the M&amp;M Building, and the construction of a sports dome facility. Again, looking at all of these capital improvements without increasing our debt service budget. That's what we're trying to accomplish. We do that, okay, then we will be able to provide the residents with what we promised, with more services and with stable taxes. It's feasible, it's our goal, and it's what we're trying to accomplish, okay? We pull that off, okay? That's, that's mission accomplished, okay? Now, like I said, tonight, you're taking a number of actions along this plan, the next meeting, you'll be taking more actions, and the meeting after that, and the meeting after that, and you're going to be making a lot of decisions in the next coming months, okay? That's the end of my presentation. I threw a ton of stuff at you. Any questions, Dave and I'd be happy to entertain right now.
Questions from the council? Thanks for all your hard work. Good job again, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Nice job.
The last item on the manager's report has to do with a presentation concerning the hospital agreement. At the last meeting, there were questions. This presentation has been prepared by the finance office, the tax assessor's office, and the manager's office. It is to provide additional information to the public. The first four items we'll be discussing, the fifth item, which has to do with the ambulance service, is still being negotiated with the hospital. So with that being said, we have a presentation that will go- So with that being said, uh, we have a presentation that we'll go through, uh, concerning that for the public's, uh, information.
Okay, sorry, you're going to have to listen to me again. Okay, um, what we're looking to do tonight is in terms of the settlement agreement, uh, with the Hackensack University Medical Center, which was voted on, uh, back at the March 10th meeting. What we want to do is provide some of the details of that settlement agreement, uh, some of the thought process that, that went into it. Um, as, as David indicated, uh, we are still in discussions on the ambulance, so we won't be touching, uh, on the ambulance in, in detail, okay? The issues that we look to resolve with the settlement agreement, okay? There are a number of issues, uh, on both sides, okay? Uh, first, we have the tax appeal filed, uh, by the hospital, okay? Specifically, they file tax appeals for the IMES Pediatric Center, uh, for the Cancer Center, for the Child Care and Learning Center, and for the Medical Arts Plaza Building, okay? In addition, we have a, a tax, we have a complaint filed in tax court, uh, against the hospital for non-payment of taxes. We've been having this ongoing issue with the crossing guard services. Uh, the hospital has an issue with the air rights calculation. And as we indicated, there's the ambulance services, which we're still in negotiations about. Uh, our plan was to try and resolve all the outstanding issues that we have with the hospital with one global settlement, okay? Now, we take these, uh, one at a time, beginning with the tax appeals. Uh, the IMES Pediatric Center, uh, was a tax appeal filed for the 2014 tax year. In the agreement, uh, what we're doing is we're granting the accept, uh, the tax exemption, uh, for 2014 and after, based on the current use of that building. Likewise, for the Cancer Center, also, it's a, it's an appeal for the 2014 tax year. And just like the Pediatric Center, we're granting the exemption for 2014 and thereafter, again, based on the current use. Now, the Child Care and Learning Center, they filed tax appeals for 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. As part of the settlement agreement, uh, the hospital agrees to withdraw those, all those tax appeals. By them withdrawing, uh, there are no tax appeal refunds. We have more than enough tax appeal refunds to deal with. Um, by not having to issue refunds, okay? We're, but we're avoiding a potential loss of about $910,000. We are granting the tax exemption for 2015 and thereafter, again, uh, based on the current use. The Medical Arts Building, all right? Again, uh, an appeal was filed for tax years 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. Now, the current assessment of that building is $126,774,000. In the settlement agreement, the hospital agrees to withdraw the tax appeals for 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. And again, no tax appeal refund, and that avoids a potential loss of about $2.9 million, okay? In turn, we're going to reduce the tax assessment in the 2015 tax year by 15 million, bringing the assessment of that building down to 111 million. The second issue we had was the non-payment of taxes, uh, for the Second Street Services. And what this was, uh, the city was awarded a tax court judgment back in 2007. Uh, the judgment itself, uh, I understand, took about eight years, okay? There are unpaid taxes owed to the city of $484,160. And in addition, we were also seeking interest going back to 1996. Uh, this issue has been around for a long time. Uh, we were looking to use this, uh, to finally get it resolved. In the settlement agreement, Section 1.05, we withdraw the tax court complaint, and the hospital pays the city as part of the global settlement. They, they pay us the $484,000 in unpaid taxes, uh, and interest is part of the, the global settlement, um, at the end. We've got the issue with the crossing guard services. Now, under the current arrangement, uh, the hospital pays the city, uh, in relation to the Atlantic Street parking garage. They pay for the crossing guard at Atlantic Street and Railroad Avenue and Atlantic Street and Newman Avenue, approximately $30,000 a year. Under the terms of the settlement agreement, if the city determines that the crossing guards are needed at those intersections, the city will provide the funding, okay? Uh, it kind of came up at the, at the last public meeting, uh, that we were eliminating the crossing guard, and that's not true, all right? We're going to treat the intersection like we treat all intersections. If a crossing guard is needed, we'll provide one and we'll provide the funding for it. Then we have the air rights. Uh, now, under the current agreement, uh, or the current developer's agreement, uh, with the hospital, the hospital leases the air rights for the pedestrian walkways that go over Atlantic Street and Second Street, okay? Uh, because it's a lease, uh, there's an annual rent. And the rent is calculated as the assessed value of the Cancer Center garage. And in this respect, the assessed value is the true value multiplied by the director's ratio, which is our, our tax assessment ratio, multiplied by the current tax rate. According to the developer's agreement, uh, the estimate in the first year was going to be 250,000 and was going to be offset by the taxes paid on the affected properties during a period of construction. Now, this developer's agreement went into effect in 2008. From 2009 to 2014, uh, the billing for the air rights has increased 41.8%. Uh, we know the value of the garage hasn't gone up 41.8%. We know the taxes haven't gone up 41.8%, uh, but the billing for air rights, according to that calculation, has gone up 41.8%. Now, in the lease agreement, okay, uh, the hospital, uh, does have the right to challenge the value of, that, the, the true value of the garage that we're using. You see, the lease agreement states, you know, that the, the true value should not be changed, except in those years in which the city performs a citywide revaluation of all properties or every five years at the request of the tenant, who's the hospital, if no intervening revaluation has occurred. No revaluation has occurred, we're doing that in 2015, okay? And in this respect, though, uh, in terms of our negotiation with the hospital, they weren't simply challenging the calculation. Uh, the hospital was challenging the formula altogether, okay? They felt that it was unfair, uh, and they stated to us that they were prepared to go to court to try and have this payment eliminated altogether. Now, what that did was that forced us to take a long, hard look at the agreement, our ability to defend the agreement, and what the repercussions would be if we weren't able to defend that agreement. One of the things that we had to really consider was that if the hospital was successful in their challenge, potentially, we could be liable for refunding the past payments. In addition, if they were successful in the challenge, and this went to a court who looked at it as strictly an air rights agreement, right? It's possible that they could determine that the value of the air rights should be based on, based on the value of the airspace and not the value of the garage, which is historically how air rights are normally valued. It's normally placed on the value of the airspace, uh, not the value of one of the connecting structures. Now, we had our city's appraiser, McNerney Associates, uh, appraise the value of the air rights based on the airspace, uh, and they place that value at 195,000, uh, for the pedestrian walkway over Second Street, okay? Assuming that the one over Atlantic Street is similar, roughly about a, a value of somewhere around 400,000. Now, without a settlement agreement and with the fact that the hospital has challenged the formula, uh, this created a budget issue for us because what it did was it took that revenue from the air rights and it turned it into a revenue at risk. And we've talked about revenue at risk in the budget. Revenue at risk is a revenue that we're not 100% convinced that we're going to collect. And we made the conscious decision last year that, in terms of tax stabilization, we need to take all revenue at risk out of the budget. The only revenue at risk that exists in our budget now is our surplus, which will always be a revenue at risk because it's never guaranteed, okay? A revenue at risk, as we said, inconsistent with our stated budget goals of accuracy and sustainability. Now, the settlement agreement, Section 1.08, uh, states that the, the hospital will make an annual payment to the city of $200,000, $200,000 for the rent of the airspace used by the pedestrian walkways. It's an annual payment. It's not based on the value of the garage, it's not based on the value of the airspace. Um, it's not selling the air rights outright, it's an annual payment. Uh, one, it would be a recurring revenue, something that we could easily put into the budget without incurring a revenue at risk at all. The issue with the ambulance services, as we said, we are still in discussions, uh, with the hospital on this. We can't really get into details on it right now, all right? What we should do is at the conclusion of those negotiations, come back and present the details of that negotiations. Uh, we just can't get into it right now without jeopardizing it. So now we have the global settlement, okay? The global settlement says that in consideration for all of the issues that we're trying to resolve, the hospital, according to a set schedule, is going to give the city $4.5 million, okay? It was our hope that what we did was, we settle all the issues we have with the hospital, all right? We can then move forward, we can partner with the hospital in terms of, of our redevelopment. Um, and what it does is it takes a lot of the burden of some major tax appeals off our plate because right now, we're face, we're fighting tax appeals on a number of different battles. As I said, this is basically the, the nuts and bolts of the agreement, okay? Without the, uh, the details on the ambulance. Um, again, any questions, uh, Dave and I'd be happy to entertain any.
I think we have Art here, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, our, our tax assessor, Art Carlson, is also here as well.
Thanks for a thorough report, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay.
That reports, uh, that concludes, uh, the manager's report. And, uh, I'd just like to say that, uh, complicated like, issues like this does take a team. And, uh, I want to personally thank Art and Jim for their, their vast knowledge and input, uh, on this, uh, on the presentations.
Is the resolution?
Sorry, Resolution 163-15.
Is a resolution for a final adoption of Ordinance Number 17-2015, an ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40A:53B for a citywide tax reassessment. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing. Do you need a motion to open?
Motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Solm.
Stand.
Mayor LaRosa.
Aye. At this time, anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come to the microphone, give your name and address to the clerk.
I'll say anonymous. It's going to cost close to a million dollars to do this. And when we're all done after five years, I don't think it's going to be accurate. And I don't, do you think you're going to collect a million dollars worth of taxes by doing this?
The reason for this is to stem a rash of tax appeals, which has been, because of the imbalance right now of not being properly assessed, everybody appeals their taxes, especially commercial properties, we're getting, uh, hit very hard on tax appeals, so this is...
You're doing a complete assessment of the city.
Yes.
If it's just for tax appeals, I, I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. If it's going to be, this was, in the last administration, the Attorney Dija was so happy that the commercial property was paying their, a lot of money. And it happened from year to year, it happened next year, it might happen next week, depending on what the market does, it depends on anything. And then, we have to quit spending money. A million dollars, first of all, over five years, is not going to be accurate. I don't care how much money you spend, it's too stretched out, the lock can happen in five years.
The object, Mr. Nix, is to get everything up to 100%. Therefore, when the tax appeal, well, you can get close. And right now, we're paying everybody's, especially, you mentioned, commercial properties are being overtaxed. They think that's what you implied.
We're never going to buck a Costco, a Verizon. I remember once they knocked that thing down, up to $4 million, one time.
The issue is, they're appealing their taxes, they're, they're winning. They're, they're winning their judgments, and no, well, not if they're assessed at 100%, they're not going to win.
How many tax appeals have you won? I asked the tax appeal attorney, how many did you ever win? Zero.
It's based on assessment more than anything else, Mr. Nix.
We have the old tax attorney.
I understand that.
He never won a tax appeal, at least he's not saying he never won. And as far as I'm concerned, he never said he could fight them and win. So I think it's definitely a waste of taxpayers' money, and we've got to cut to the bone. And you guys are definitely going in the opposite direction. I'm totally against the taxes, this tax assessment, but it, and it changes so much. One block from another block. Once you have a building on, uh, State Street two years ago, under the bomb that zone over there, the homeless shelter, this year, you've got a 22-story building going up. That's in a matter of a couple, two years. It's not going to work, I don't see it working. And at the end of five years, I'd like to have something from the council of how much you really gained. Because it's nice to say we're going to do this, and it's going to do that, and it's going to do that, you know what? Going to do it never worked out. Nobody ever said it's a profit for the city. Does, does it, I've never heard what it said, oh, we spent a million, we made 2 million. If you can say that in five years, it's not going to happen. And now you, the tax attorney's here, open to the public, he can speak for himself, defend it, if you want.
Mayor, if I could just make one comment?
Sure.
Uh, because being able to judge a program on its success or failure is actually, uh, a very good idea. Um, two years from now, uh, following the reassessments done in 2016, it applies for the 2016 tax year, it gets closer to three years from now. We should see a significant drop in tax appeals filed. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark?
No, that's correct.
The whole appeal.
If we see a significant drop in tax appeals filed, that would be a measure of success.
Not only that, it gives us the opportunity by doing this, first of all, it's a million dollars, it's $950,000, it's down to a million dollars. It's spread over five years, so it's $200,000, a little bit more a year. We're paying back so much more money on tax appeals, we're going to save a lot of money on this plan, okay? This is a preemptive plan. It stops the, it stops the flood of tax appeals. This is why we're doing it. It makes total fiscal sense to do. We get 100% ratio, no longer will the attorneys be able to file appeals on ratios. Not only that, it allows us to open up the books each year. And if we see a sale in an apartment building that's, say, 20% to 25% above the assessed value, I can raise the assessment, okay? Right, right now, we're locked in, I can't raise the assessment on a large, something like a shop right that sells for $37 million, like you did. I had assessed at 24 million. With this plan, I can bring it up to market value. That's the point. It keeps everything current, it, it, it stops the shifts to the residential properties. That's the revaluation, Lenny. We're using the sales, we're, we're not looking in the rearview mirror anymore, we're looking forward. We win a lot of appeals, they withdraw. You don't see the, we don't, nothing that we win comes before the council because we're not refunding. A lot of times, in settlements, they withdraw, so that's a win, when they withdraw.
Art, how many tax appeals were filed this year?
This year, we had another 700 tax appeals. 700 tax appeals, that's correct. This, this, this plan, we can address it every year.
And that's tax appeals that were filed this year alone?
And how many won appeals, about?
This year, we haven't, haven't, we haven't had the hearings yet. We're, we're still digging out of the last, we're still digging out of the last hole, Lenny. Do you want to keep digging, or you want to stop, stop the digging?
I don't want to spend 950...
We're spending so much more money on refunds, so you understand the offset? If we spent two hundred thousand dollars to do this plan, okay, it stabilizes the taxes. We're refunding millions of dollars a year just based on the ratio. This takes the ratio away as a ploy for tax attorneys.
The budget 2015 raised the budget by one point five million dollars based on tax appeals alone, Lenny. One year.
You've saved a lot of money.
One point five million?
Considering we're spending a million, we're spending a million, we're getting nothing back.
You're not making sense there.
Of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars gone out the window, under, which is, which is what I like, after the evaluation is over, you can't even, there's no way to even-
This is, this, Lenny, you're not listening.
There's no way to even judge how much you're gonna save because of underlying things. If the economy took a dive, I've seen, I've seen my mother's house go from ten, twelve thousand dollars to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, now I think it's down to three hundred or some odd thousand dollars, which is all low and good, but it's not even worth that. So when you start doing these appraisal values, I just, I'm like, the one property, and other property, they have gone, it depends what the economy does.
Right, so that's why we're addressing this, because we could address it every year. So if a property goes down two percent, we could, we could, you know, put it down two percent, instead of waiting, instead of having a five, six-year period.
They're gonna assess the whole town every year?
That's right.
For five years.
For two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Four hundred and fifty.
Nine hundred and fifty over five years.
You're gonna assess the, the whole town in the first year, and then one-fourth in the next four years.
Yeah, but it's still gonna be a hundred percent reassessment each year.
Oh, okay, you're talking about the ratio, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent.
And every year?
Every year.
After that.
For five years. So what's not to like about this plan? I don't understand. Tell me, tell me, tell me what I'm missing.
What other town has done it?
Uh, well, down in South Jersey, there's a lot of towns that do it. Monmouth County, the whole, the whole county's doing it, Little Ferry's doing it this year.
South Hackensack.
South Hackensack's doing it.
Hoboken has done it.
So, we're not alone. I wanted, I wanted to do this years ago.
Okay, and then maybe the tax assessment, some more people are gonna, like, maybe when you're discussing my mother's house, then she's gonna appeal her tax, it goes both ways now.
Yeah, but she can appeal each year, she can come to, we're gonna have a hearing here, every, every two weeks before the bills go out, before the postcards go out.
During the assumption, when you do this tax reevaluation-
Right.
-that you're, you're gonna save people from doing a tax appeal, I'm under the assumption, if you do this tax reevaluation, maybe more people in the Fairmount section are gonna appeal their taxes, not less, more. It's a two-way street.
That's only if they were under-assessed.
That's what I'm saying.
That has not been the case.
Right.
The properties are over-assessed.
You're talking about-
That's why we have the tax appeals.
I'm talking about-
It's based on value. If you're, if you're properly valued, you're properly taxed.
It's horses.
The value is that, your house and the three junior property, what they sold for.
Okay.
It's a simple evaluation.
Public session, there's no time limit.
Am I right?
I don't understand your logic, to be honest with you. This, this is, to me, it's just-
Next?
Yeah, I don't really wanna get into it anymore.
Mr. Nix.
I explained it.
The logic could be it can go both ways.
Mr. Nix, we have to move along. Anybody else?
The logic is, it can go both ways.
Is there anybody?
Am I wrong? You're not guaranteed that this appraisal's gonna stop appeals, also might open-
Hey, the reason, the reason people appeal their taxes is because they're over-assessed.
Right.
That's why we have so many tax appeals.
And we're gonna find out that maybe more people have been over-assessed. It can go both ways, whether you like it.
That made no sense.
It does make no sense.
Anybody else wanna speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only? Please step forward. Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Alright, now we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Stand.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand and fifteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution one sixty-four dash fifteen?
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and fifteen, an ordinance amending Part Two entitled General Legislation, Chapter one seventy entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section sixty-four entitled Schedule fifteen, prohibited turns at intersections.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance eighteen dash two thousand and fifteen, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven o'clock PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be in, she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when aware, said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. We're gonna pull one sixty-five fifteen, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Cat.
I need to take my good time.
Madam clerk, is this a typo on resolution ten, as far as the number goes?
No.
No?
Resolution one fifty-five dash fifteen was the one from last meeting that we had-
Just caught my attention, wanted to double-check.
We postponed it.
Resolution one fifty-five dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for a special emergency appropriation for a reassessment of all real property in the city.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
How do you do the same resolution at the same time?
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Stand.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-six dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for an emergency appropriation for a tax appeal refund to Land Plus LLC, Peter Tucci Senior, One Essex Street Realty, Plus One LLC and Properties Plus.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-seven dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for the award of contract for citywide reassessment.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-eight dash fifteen?
This is a resolution for the authorization for the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills in accordance with PL nineteen ninety-four D seventy-two.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one sixty-nine fifteen?
Is a resolution for the authorizing of the change order number two for the landscape dynamics for Atlantic Street Park Project.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy dash fifteen?
A resolution authorizing raffle licenses.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-one dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing a refund for the Hackensack Junior Truck registration.
Member motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-two dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing a tax refund?
Motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-three dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel an amount for the two thousand and fifteen sewer bill and issue a refund to one fifty-four Clinton Place.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-four dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing and directing the planning board to undertake an investigation to determine whether delineated area of Block three twelve Lot one, which is otherwise known as two forty Main Street, satisfies the criteria for designation as a non-condemnation redevelopment area.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-five dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the recreation board appointment for Lori Ann Henderson Manning.
Member motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-six dash fifteen?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hackensack designating Ingerman Development Company LLC as a redeveloper for property as shown as Block three oh one Lot six, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Ingerman Development Company LLC.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-seven dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to accept a subgrant award of the federal fiscal year two thousand and fourteen of Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Performance Grant Program funding, and for the City of Hackensack's financial officer to amend the budget and certify the availability of funds.
Member motion, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Error on this, Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution one seventy-nine dash fifteen?
Deputy.
Oops.
One seventy-eight.
We skipped one seventy-eight first.
No, I'm sorry. Resolution one seventy-eight dash fifteen, I crossed it off by mistake.
This is a resolution appointing the municipal housing liaison.
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. We're pulling resolution one seventy-nine dash fifteen, correct?
It goes with the- It goes with the other one, yes, it's gotta get pulled.
Yeah.
Okay.
Resolution one eighty dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the Hackensack Police Department to request participation in the ten thirty-three program?
Member motion, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 181-15.
Is a resolution requiring the mayor and council to have oversight of the Hackensack Police Department's participation in the 1033 program?
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Take them. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sohm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And last but not least, Resolution 182-15, payment of the bills.
Okay, this is be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be in or hereby ordered paid. Current fund is $11,060,741.60. Rans is $1,250. Public parking system is $2,474.33. Capital is $200,638.42. Escrow $27,701.41. Trust accounts $131,224.81. Total expenditures $11,424,305.57.
I have a motion, please.
Offer.
Take them. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sohm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Thank you. You're not the same resolution, sir. One was an ordinance, and one was a resolution. Okay, I have a motion open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sohm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. This time, anybody who'd like to speak, please come up to the podium. You have five minutes. Thank you. Give your name and address to the clerk. Mr. Eisen, how are you?
Good evening, council members. Larry Eisen, Maple Hill Drive. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Jason on his appointment. It's nice to see a youth movement up on the dais. I have two questions. One for you, sir. You talked about trying to encourage people to improve their properties as part of the upgrade of the town. Well, the downside of that is the moment you upgrade your property is you get hit with an increased tax assessment. Have you considered the possibility to encourage people to improve their properties, giving an abatement for a few years so that they don't get hit whammo right away with the tax increase, which would normally be the case?
Have I considered it? Yeah, to be perfectly honest, we're looking at an entire tax abatement policy right now. What you're describing is a good idea. More along the lines of my presentation was what we want to do is try and get the assessments fair so that a homeowner, in trying to decide if he should improve his house or not, at least makes the decision knowing his assessment is fair. If you don't think, if you think you're over-assessed, you're not going to improve your property because you're going to get a tax increase. If you think your assessment is fair, you may improve your property, okay? What you're describing, though, yet should definitely be considered.
It would be an additional incentive to get people to do it. That's number one. Number two, or three, I guess, congratulations, Jason, was number one. At some point, I understand, we are repaving Prospect. I do not know the timing on that issue, but there is a very, very short street, one block long. Berry Street goes from Prospect to Summit, and I think if anybody were to drive down it, they would agree with me that it is the pothole champion of all of Hackensack streets. A strip approximately 15 to 20 feet wide down the center of that one block of Berry is virtually un-travellable. You can't see any of the original pavement. It is pothole covering over pothole covering over pothole covering. Since you're going all the way down Prospect, would it be possible to add repave into that one block on Berry, which I think most of the neighbors in the area would be very pleased with?
We'll take, we'll take a look at that, and that's all I can say at this time.
Okay.
There's unfortunately, there's a lot of streets that need help.
Believe me, you haven't seen one like this.
We're trying to develop a long-range plan to solve that problem.
Well, it only strikes me that since the equipment is going to be right there, it seems an advantageous moment to try to take advantage of the proximity of the paving equipment.
I agree with that.
That one block, rather than doing it separately sometime down the line.
We will look at it, see if we can work something out with that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, please.
Richard Salkin, Hackensack, New Jersey.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor. I'd like to follow up on this agreement with the medical center. Stop the clock, please. By the way, Arthur, what are you doing up there?
Just answered some questions. I don't have a place to sit.
No place to sit, so I came up here to answer questions on the reassessment, that's all.
What was the, was the delegation that discussed this, the problems, the issues on both sides, was it the manager, the CFO, and tax collector?
I wouldn't know because I wasn't there. You'd have to ask the manager.
That's correct, Mr. Salkin. And as well as prior to me getting here would have been Mr. Koster.
Okay.
Mr. Who?
Koster.
All right.
Excuse me, stop the clock one minute. Mr. Ninn, please, when somebody's at the podium, you can't interrupt him, but you're taking away from his time.
Well, speak up. I don't want to take against anybody's time. Give them one of my minutes.
Sorry. You're lucky to charge it, Rick.
No, no, no. All right. How many meetings were there with the medical center that you participated in, Mr. Tros, if I can? Round it off.
Probably at least five or six.
All right. And the only time the council discussed this was February 23rd, the executive session? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, it's a council, yeah, when it was presented in the back room, yes.
Now, I understand, you know, it's a terrible deal. It really, it's awful. I don't get it. Okay. And I understand why, I didn't understand what you guys were doing by approving it, but now I do because the installation of fear, the threat that the hospital suddenly is going to say, "We are going to sue you, and we're going to overturn this," would have never happened, would have never happened. I gave you the background last time I spoke on this. The background, and Kathy, you were involved, you came to these meetings, you grilled me along with Regina about the deal. You knew exactly what we were doing. We accommodated the hospital because they would have lost a grand if we had done the land remains in the hospital's name, holding company takes the improvement. There is no way after seven years where their hot, where their attorneys drafted the agreement in large part that any court would have overturned this. You got bluff, you got stampeded, and the sad thing is, you gave a gift to the medical center of $12 million. Over the course of this lease, that's 43 years, at 2% per year, by the last year, the annual rental of the air rights would have been $970,000. Taking everything they're giving you, the 4.5 cash, the $200,000 a year, it's 28 minus 16, $12 million urinated away. But you got stampeded. You're only as good as your advisors. And you got to, I said this before, due diligence, and I'm sorry to single you out, Kathy, but you know, you haven't resolved the hospital, the ambulance situation, but due diligence is not at the time that is presented to you asking, "Well, are the residents still going to get the ambulance services?" And then Carlson says, "Yeah, yeah, it came up in the discussion." You should have demanded to eyeball it then. You would not have had this problem now if you had raised your voice. This is a shame. This is a disgrace. Like I said last time, the best thing that can happen to the City of Hackensack right now is somebody to sue on the basis, John, of you being present in an executive session that you had no business being present in. You better hope that happens.
Sure, absolutely.
Rick, if you'd save your...
It's your time up. You're done, Rick? I mean, okay, okay.
Only because you singled me out in particular. I have some numbers, and again, I don't know how you come up with your $12 million.
I'd be happy to, if you give me your time.
You could, no, you can show me afterwards. We could talk about it. I'll hear. How he come up with his $12 million. Okay, all right, hold on.
Give us parabas.
Hold on. But I want, I really, we could, I really want to talk about the couple of other things that you said. Number one, I think, as you've ascertained, that you seem to be singling me out. I was not part of any of these negotiations, and I was not sitting at any tables. The only information I had was, was briefed to us in an executive session meeting, right? And that's, that's the truth, and that's the story.
All right, that's all I, it's quoted, Kathy. That's all I quoted.
Now, when you are talking about, you said that I was...
Emerald.
No, you said that years back I was a critic of some of these negotiations.
No, you grilled me about it.
I grilled you about it. Okay, I grilled you about some of these negotiations. Absolutely, Rick. And when you look at this, and when you look at the agreement, as was put forth in the developers' agreement, really what you did or crafted, or whoever, not you personally, but whoever did this, really, this was a pilot program. It was really a payment in lieu of taxes. Let me finish. You had your turn, let me finish, because you did not charge them, you did not tax them on air rights. You chose to...
Absolutely, of course that. That was the point. We were upfront about that.
Rick, I'll let you speak. I'll let you...
No, I know.
I'll let you, I'll let you...
The law lets me speak, Kathy. You didn't...
I'll let you speak. Can you just give me that? You asked me a question, you singled me out.
I didn't ask you a question, but go ahead.
All right, you singled me out, so I'm trying to answer you in the best I can. All right, Rick, if that, if that agreement had been drafted properly as a pilot agreement, right, if it had been filed, let me finish.
I didn't say a word. Stop doing that.
If it had, because I could see you're getting ready to. If it had been filed with the state and handled properly as a pilot agreement, that it was a payment in lieu of taxes on the, on the garage or the cancer center, they agreed to pay X amount of dollars based on the garage. The argument that the hospital or the medical center would have would be a difficult argument, but because it was not filed in that fashion, that enables them or gives them a much greater opportunity and a greater window to win this case. Now, I'm not agreeing that we made any concessions, and I'm not agreeing to your $12 million number, because I've done my due diligence and I have my numbers as well, but that answers, I hope that answers for you.
No, it doesn't answer. It's nonsense. What you just said is total nonsense, Kathy.
It is not total nonsense.
Where'd you, where'd you go, Kathy? Please tell me.
I didn't.
You didn't? Oh.
Do you agree that this is a payment in lieu of taxes?
No, I do not agree it was a payment in lieu of taxes.
Oh, it wasn't. So the fact that you taxed an air right based on a real estate value of a garage, that is illegal. You're allowed to do that and not make it a payment in lieu of taxes.
Two, two parties at arms length.
I don't, I don't think so.
Now, you're interrupting me. You asked a question. Do you want an answer? You want a posture, Kathy? Do you want to spin a little more?
Keep it civil, please.
Keep it civil. We'll discuss it. We'll discuss it.
Thank you. We'll let it go on, but please stop.
It was absolutely a legal thing to do. Whether you think it was over, if you're going to focus, if you're going to ignore the reality, if you're going to ignore the history of what was going on, of what the hospital asked us to do to accommodate them so they didn't lose their $6 million grant from the state, there is no way, I will stick to this, there is no way any court would have overturned this agreement. No way. Zero possibility.
And you're entitled...
Their attorneys drafted this. Do you understand how significant that is?
You're entitled...
Do you understand how significant that is? Do you think that's significant?
The problem is, Mr. Salkin, that the folks that were part of this agreement are no longer affiliated with the medical center.
Means nothing. They represented the medical...
It does mean something. You have a new set of eyes and a new set of attorneys that are bringing up very valid points.
Only valid because you're trying to defend what you did. They're not valid points. This agreement would have survived anyhow.
You are allowed and entitled to your opinion.
Yeah, and I believe you've been doing this for 43 years, so give me a little credit for I know what I'm talking about.
And I am allowed to voice the opinion as it has been presented to me. No, I do not claim to be an attorney. I do not claim to have any legal background whatsoever. I am just, you asked what happened. I am explaining to you...
I didn't ask whatever. I know what happened.
I'm explaining to you exactly the portion of the area.
What you're doing, Kathy, is spinning, as you always do. This is total nonsense.
If you're going to call, if you're going to resort to that, we can't have, we can't have an...
Why don't you two get together and look at your numbers after the meeting?
We'll talk about it later.
Next, please. Thank you.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. I'm not about the air rights. I'm, I'm about the ambulance. Now, you talk about due diligence. Hey, I didn't hear anything until last meeting. The first I heard was when Mr. Salkin read it up here. I had no background, no, no clue before that, but I knew as soon as he read that, that what it said was that the residents will be billed, that shall be billed directly, the patients utilizing such services. I immediately knew that. I don't know how nobody else did. No, with the air rights, I, it wasn't twisting their arm to do it. We twisted their arm to accept our ambulance. We did, and they don't want to do it, so they gave it back. I understand this is all in negotiations, and you know what? The best, best possible outcome for the residents of this city is that comes out of the agreement completely. Leave it as it was because there is a contract. There is a contract already for this, this whole issue of the ambulance, and you just changing one paragraph of this contract and changing it to the disadvantage of the residents who use this service. The city's not paying the cap anymore. The city's not paying over the cap anymore. So who's paying it? The residents, whoever utilizes patients utilizing such services. Exactly what it says in the, in the current agreement. I know you're still in negotiations, but I don't understand why you're still in negotiations if you approved this two months ago. Oh, because something's wrong? Something has to change? What has to change is this comes out of the agreement completely. That is the best outcome for everybody because the original agreement, paragraph 12, it says, "No city resident shall be billed." And then you just changed it to the hospital will bill us directly. How, how could you change that contract with that one paragraph? How could you change the service without putting it out to bid? How could you do that? Due diligence? There was none on that. None, absolutely none. I did no due diligence. I was sitting in the back of the room and heard a sentence and knew it was wrong. And everybody knows it's wrong. You can spin it, you can say whatever you want. So if that part of it is wrong, Mr. Salkin wasn't involved in the numbers from the beginning, his numbers make more sense to me. They're, they're better numbers, and the hospital, I don't care if they changed attorneys, I don't too care if they changed presidents. They are a corporation, and the corporation signed, and the corporation made an agreement, and that carries down. It doesn't matter if you change, just like you have ordinances. There are ordinances in the city, and when you're not here anymore, there will still be ordinances in this city, okay? And they, they were, they can be challenged, but very, very rarely will they be won if the party, the hospital, made that agreement. They were very much involved in that agreement. But I still am very much concerned about the ambulance because nobody knew it. It got over everybody's head. Mr. Tros, you didn't know you did that? You didn't know you did that? Mr. Carlson, you didn't know you did that? But anybody that lives here in Hackensack and knows, knows what's going on should have known, should have known that's what happened when it says, "Shall be billed directly." That's what it says in that agreement at 1.07, to patients utilizing such services. That doesn't apply to anybody outside of Hackensack. It's Hackensack residents are going to be billed, so don't tell me that's not what it says. Don't spin it because it's what it says, and that's why you're back in negotiations. And again, I say the best, best possible outcome is you take the ambulance off the table completely. Don't even, don't even include it in the agreement at all because it never should have been there in the first place.
Can I answer for you?
Yes, go ahead.
Regina, if you'll wait a second. I, because the mayor can't discuss any of the HUMC agreements or potentials, so I'm going to answer, try and answer for us if I can. I can't get into too much of the details until they've been finally resolved, but I tell you, the commitment of myself and this entire council is not to change the way the billing, the way the liability for the resident currently is. There were, there are some issues as to how this gets incorporated. There were issues originally that I can't go into details about the legality of the way some of this had been set up based on prior changes in rulings by some of the OIG offices. So we have to comply with everything and make sure that it's legal. What we're working on today in conjunction with the hospital is how to provide the service where our residents that are using the HUMC ambulance service will not be responsible for the co-pay. If the billing goes through the resident, it's only to attach it to their insurance should they have it.
And that, that's, no, wait a minute, that's paragraph 12 in the original agreement if you went and looked at it, okay?
I'm trying to explain to you. We...
You don't need to explain to me. I obviously know it.
What, what you don't know is that we have the same desired outcome. What you're...
But you already agreed, when you let that agreement go through, you agreed to bill the residents.
But Regina, Regina, but not...
No, Kathy, you got it. You agreed to it. You can spin it however you want. You agreed to it.
Jason Denham, good evening. I wasn't going to speak tonight, and I got really bad handwriting, but I was watching your little slideshow up there tonight regarding the settlement agreement with the hospital. Did I see, right, that we think it's a bad thing that the calculation for the air rights would have went up 41%? That's a bad thing? As Mr. Salkin pointed out, that means the last...
Again, I can't speak about it, so I'll let somebody else.
Oh, no, it's rhetorical question.
We'll ask Jim to just address what you feel.
As, as Mr. Salkin pointed out, the last year, that payment would have been in excess of $900,000. So I'm a little confused as to why it's a bad thing for the city that the air right calculation was going to go up 41%, so we had it backed down from the hospital. That's a little alarming to me. It sounds like, as Mr. Salkin pointed out, you guys got bullied. You guys got smoked, you got fed a bunch of ridiculous information, and you were afraid to go to court, which I'm a little disturbed and shocked by because you spent $20,000 on a $300 copy fee about a year ago. And you sold this city down the river for 12, over $12 million. That's ridiculous. Kathy, the agreement has already been entered into. The ambulance agreement is done. The time for these questions would have been in January, February, when your city manager and your CFO was doing the deal. Back in February shouldn't have been the first time you found out about this. Let me finish, Kathy, because I have five minutes, and you have an endless amount of time. I know how it works. I appreciate you trying to jump in there. Thank you, Lenny. I appreciate it, but I can handle myself. And just some friendly advice, I figured out, just sitting here tonight, how we can pay for a scoreboard at Fashini Park. We can make sure Regina and Debbie are dry when it rains. We could pay Berry's, which, by the way, this may be the first time publicly I agree with Mr. Eisen. Berry Street's a disaster. How about we, we hold the hospital to their original deal? An agreement, an agreement was entered into by two entities with counsel. Just because you have a new lawyer or you have a new officer at the hospital doesn't mean you get to redo a deal you think is bad. It doesn't mean that this city should throw the taxpayers under the bus because you're scared of the hospital. You could pay for the scoreboard, you could pay for the repaving, you could pay to keep the city hall roof on. If you don't redo the deal with the hospital, we don't give councilmen's wives illegal raises, and we're not building us $100,000 soccer doll, we can do all of it. But what happened here with this deal stinks. It's not right, and I hope, Mr. Scrible's a very talented attorney, I hope his firm can figure out a way to get us out of it because you're willing to go to war with me over $300. You're not willing to go, go to war with the hospital in excess of $12 million? Something's not right about that, Mr. Mayor. I'm just telling you, it's not right. Someone's going to sue you, and they may win. I still got time. I know there's some CBA negotiations going on currently, and Mayor, let me tell you this. I've been a part of negotiations, as you know, and I know they can be difficult, and they can be, you know, there's some tense moments there, but the way, once again, our city employees are being treated by your rep, and I'm not saying it's anybody sitting on the council side, but the way they're being treated by some people sitting up here is absolutely disgusting. When many people are coming up to me saying they've been, they're being bullied, they're being treated with arrogance, it is disgusting. Some of these people have spent 20 to 30 years of their lives in this city, working for it. You can negotiate hard, you can negotiate, you can be a tough negotiator, but you could treat people respectfully with some professionalism. I strongly suggest, Mr. Tros, that starts to happen here, because it's not right with some of the stuff you've been doing.
It always goes based both ways, Mr. Denham.
Which one? Go ahead.
You want to answer?
Yeah.
Jason, I think this, our CFO wanted to address some of your questions. If you'll come, you want to come back?
Just the 41%. What, what it was is that the, the air rights billing went up 41, 41.8% I believe, between 2009 and 2014, and the calculation in the developers' agreement was supposed to be the true value of the garage, right? It was able to be changed, but it was never changed. Okay, so the true value of the garage stayed exactly the same, multiplied by the tax rate, and the taxes didn't go up 41% in that period. That was the point, you know?
I appreciate that. So they made a bad deal for themselves. That's their problem. Shouldn't it be the citizens of Hackensack's problem?
Now, if you give me the opportunity to talk about some of the other issues that you brought up, it's not like, in the agreement, it says, as I believe the CFO showed in his presentation, that if the, if the valuation of the property has not changed in five years, it's up for renegotiation, right? So it had been more than five years. So that's what brought this. They, the hospital pursued this. City did not pursue.
I have no doubt the hospital pursued this.
The hospital has every right legally, if you read that document, to pursue this and to, to look into this, the assessment of this, right? Number one, with the reevaluations that are happening, the decline in property values, do you think that if that garage had its assessment today, that it would be equal in value to what it was based on if they successfully appealed it? Those are the things that our CFO brought up. There were many, many more points. Forget about it going up to $900,000. There's a very great risk that the value of that would have decreased, not increased.
Kathy, it's commercial property. It's not decreasing. No one here is stupid. We're talking about 40, Kathy, we're talking about 40 years.
Based on $30 million worth of taxes.
You're telling me 40 years ago, back in 1975, that the property was worth less than it is today?
We're showing commercial properties that assessments have declined in those particular We're showing commercial properties that assessments have declined in those particular years. And this one absolutely would have. So there are many contributing factors. If that's what you're basing your $12 million on, then let me tell you, that's poof, that's smoke and mirrors. And what we base, what we, let me finish. It's my turn, your turn, you used your five minutes.
You asked me to come back to the podium.
To hear our answers, to hear, invited you back-
You're taking over for the mayor, you're the relying officer. You asked me to come back to the podium.
To hear our answers, to be respectful, Jason, so we don't have to talk to you in your seat.
I didn't mean respectful.
You used your five minutes, and this was our time to speak. We're trying to answer your questions in a respectful way. Because this isn't, this is, what's trying to be presented here is trying to take a partnership between the city and the Hackensack Medical Center and make it much less than it is. And it is a partnership. And it's something that we've agreed into together that is a reasonable expectation by the city and a reasonable expectation by the hospital. No negotiation gives either party, that's what negotiation means. No negotiation gives either party everything they want. But if you can walk away with that and you can look at the numbers of what's fair, $4 million in tax appeals that we would have paid out, that's part of this deal. I mean, there was, they owed us tax judgments from way back when. Another thing that, you know, happened in the city, people owing us money that we always seem to fail to collect. I don't understand why, it's my turn to speak, I don't understand why. But we were able to bring these things to the table to work on an equitable deal for the city. And if you lay these numbers out, sure, you can take your projections all you want with your real estate. You can say, oh, we're gonna just manufacture that, this is going to, you know, turn into this phenomenal number. Well, the same thing is true for money that's received at this time. All right, every dollar that we get today is worth far more than that dollar is going to get, be worth in 40 years. Think about it, if you had a dollar 40 years ago and you went to the supermarket, what you were going to buy with that dollar based on what you're gonna buy today is very different. So if the city is able to take money and in, at this point, present day and time, and then use that money as an investment in infrastructure support, as our CFO pointed out, many things that have been neglected in this town for many years. So if we are able to use that money today, we will get more money, more value for that money. And number two, it's interest avoidance. If there's things that we would have had to go out and bond for, and now we have money for, it's interest avoidance. So where you can come up with your $12 million, I can also justify an equal and equitable value for both of those, both of those amounts of money is growing in value. So that kind of shoots down this 12 million versus exactly what we got.
It doesn't shoot down anything.
We got, yes, I did. We got a reasonable deal, if you do a present value calculation. That's how you look at, that's a tool that's used to evaluate the factual pieces.
I know what it means.
If you know what it is, then that's what you need to do. Go back, take your numbers, and look at it. Because that's what was done here.
You know what, you guys should go back, you were elected, not me.
Well, I'm explaining to you.
You know, if you wanna come up with- If you wanna talk about partnership, you have a managing partner in the hospital. You're already a partner here.
My turn to speak. We did, our financial department did an honest evaluation. It's a fair assessment of our relationship with the hospital and with conditions of contracts that were due to be renewed and perhaps did not, would not withstand the court. And that was some, if we got a reasonable agreement, which we did, an agreement that was fair to both parties, it was a step that this city was willing to take and took.
You did it.
End of story.
I think you're hearing, it's not right.
End of story.
Well, it's not the end of the story, but-
Next, guys. Thank you, Jason.
Richard Serbo, 46 Spring Valley Avenue. And the traffic continues, okay? Spring Valley Avenue is absolutely ridiculous, okay? The quality of life is just, it's gone, all right? Because of the traffic. All right, I just wanna start by asking a question that I've been asking all over the town. All, every ward and every district, I've been asking the question, how has Hackensack deteriorated and gone downhill so bad, but everyone's salaries have gone up? I don't get that. And I haven't got an answer for the question. I haven't, no, no one has been able to answer the question of how everything has gone downhill. I asked Albert Dibb the other night. How has everything gone downhill, but everyone's salary has gone up? Please, someone, if they can answer it before I leave, let me know, okay? I'd like, I've never met our new councilman, Mr. Soam. I welcome you to the council, and what an opportunity you have. It's amazing that you are appointed to sit on the council and make decisions for 50,000 people. It's amazing. And I just wanted to, I'll start you with a quote to welcome you to Hackensack. And it's a 17th century quote from George Chapman. And it goes, it goes like this. It's, every, every young man thinks that old men are fools. But all old men know that young men are fools. So I'll start you there, and God bless you, I wish you well on the council, I really do. Okay.
He's basically telling you, listen up.
Take it the way you want. Okay, also, I wanna, I wanna say that we listened to Mr. Mangan again, and we listened to this legalese, and everyone talks in their own nomenclature. It's fascinating. Everyone does it, the medical profession, legal profession, this financial newness, okay? Everybody talks in their own nomenclature. And what that gives a sign to everyone to, is that you're hiding something, okay? That's what it's all about. It is, okay? It's a way of, it's a way of fooling the public because you're talking your own language. Right, Mr. Screambo? It's true, you know that. Mr. Mangan, yes or no?
There are certain terms in finance, yeah, for sure. If you ever have a question, though, ask a specific question, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, I know, but to simplify it in layman's terms, wouldn't that be the right thing to do?
To be honest, I do try to present it as simple as possible.
Okay.
And I'll try harder.
Can I chip in?
Yeah, go ahead.
If he was, if we were hiding something, you wouldn't do a PowerPoint presentation, he would just move forward.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Try to explain something.
Things, things can get confusing and mistakes can be made. It's true, Mr. Screambo knows it. Doctors know, are any doctors in the house, they know it.
Well, unfortunately, because of their trade, they may have to, like the legal profession, when they're in court, they have to use their certain nuances of their professional language. And maybe it carries off into this room, and some of us, you know, aren't quite, you know.
But the message is, hey, you don't understand. The public doesn't understand, let us talk in our own language.
I think most, everybody understood Mr. Mangan's presentation.
Okay, let's move on. Let's move on. You know, I have this pet peeve now for the tax abatements. You said there's only one building that's got their tax abatement gift, the 30-year one, isn't it? On State Street. Now, one time Kathy said I didn't like figures when I, I kind of just smirked when we aborted the budget once. And Kathy said, oh, well, maybe you don't like numbers, Mr. Serbo. I do like numbers. So I'm gonna ask, what are the numbers and what's the figures on that giveaway? The taxpayers wanna know what that giveaway-
On that particular building?
Yeah. What's the actual total giveaway?
Let me make it simple. Would you rather have $70,000 in your pocket or $270,000 in your pocket?
Well, look, explain it, explain it the right way.
That property was, very, very good. That property was blighted property. It'd been sitting there and not doing anything for years.
Okay.
And would sit another 20 years.
I just want the giveaway number.
Not sitting 20, it'd sit another 20 years. It was paying total on the property about $70,000, still over $70,000 a year. With the tax abatement moving forward, it starts paying $270,000, $270,000 a year. And that increases over time with the heavy end near the last five years of the pilot property.
I like numbers, remember? What's the number that was given away?
Right off the bat, it's $200,000 more a year for the city than we were collecting before in taxes.
That's not what I asked, but that's okay.
I don't know what number you're looking for.
It's the same, you're talking in your own language now, so we'll leave that. Okay, I wanna end up, because you're gonna cut me off. This Upper Main Alliance thing, okay? I think-
You're over already, I'm sorry, I didn't even hear it.
Wait, what? I can't be over. How about Jason, he was up here for an hour, and Lenny?
That was, that was me talking.
That was me talking, because I went back and-
That was, that was me trying to, trying to satisfy his question.
All right, I have one more last thing to say. This Upper Main Street Alliance thing, okay? Is, you know, when I, when I first heard it, you know, it seems, it seems selective. And today, yesterday, I spoke to someone that's in lower, on Lower Main Street, and they feel excluded, okay? They do. They say that during the street fair, they're not involved, they have to pay for a booth instead of, because they're not part of this Upper Main Street Alliance. Why not make it just the All Main Street Alliance, or, you know, let's-
I can't, I can't answer that for you, but they have been coming down further as time goes on.
Yeah, but people are, on Lower Main Street are complaining about not being involved in sort of the whole program or whatever.
Because of the way some of the taxes, or the way some of the businesses are structured, there, some of it wouldn't work with them. Take the San Zari property, for instance.
Right.
The way they're taxed is on a percentage, it wouldn't make sense for somebody like him to belong to the Main Street Alliance based on the tax assessment, the special assessment they'd have to pay would be ridiculous for him. So, but-
All right.
Something to think about, I agree.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next, please.
Steve Gilbert, 304 Clinton Place, believe it or not, I had no intention of speaking tonight until Mr. Serbo just spoke. Mr. Serbo did have a very clear question. And I'm not gonna defend or beat up whether or not we should have given that property the tax abatement. However, he did have a very clear question, what would have been the fair tax assessment that would have been given to that building had there been no abatement? Now, everything has a cost-benefit analysis, and you guys wanna talk about smoke and mirrors? Well, we'll talk about smoke and mirrors, everyone in the public. When you look at the cost-benefit analysis of whether you want $70,000 or $270,000, how many units are there in that building?
222.
How many residents do you think will be in that building? How many are one bedroom, how many are two bedroom? You guys did it, right?
Off the top of my head, probably about 320.
Okay, 320 people. How many of those people do you think will be? Because we don't, it's a tax base, we wanna look at the entire tax base. How many of those people are gonna have children? How many of those children are gonna go to our school? How many more police officers? How many more fire department? What's the tax on all the services across the entire city? Do you really think that $200,000 absorbs the entire cost across the entire city? Smoke and mirrors, you wanna talk about it? He had a very legitimate question, and it should have been answered.
Well, the way I understood the question was, wasn't what the rate was over time, that you, the way you just explained it. And I, and I agree with you. And we do, believe me, we do a complete analysis on the children, not on that building, because that wasn't his council. But we do a complete fiscal analysis on the buildings. We do a complete study on how many children they plan on having. We ask them, they have to come up with a solid number of how many children do you plan on having in this town? Because pilots do not pay to the school system.
And it was a very legitimate question that should have been answered as to what the total value of the abatement was. And not just to say that $70,000 to $270,000, we got an extra $200,000 in our pocket, because there's a lot more that goes into that decision than just that. And just one last little item. Mr. Eisen talked about Berry Street, that one stretch of Berry Street. It's absolutely atrocious. It's been that way, it's been that way.
Absolutely, we'll take a look at it.
Honestly, as long as I'm live, because I'm very familiar with that block. And just as an aside, Gilbert no longer lives on the block, so you guys are more than welcome. You can probably add it to the top of your list of paving now.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo. Keeping what the last two speakers say, I'm wondering if the money that this property on State Street's gonna generate is actually gonna be a plus or a minus. Tonight's Resolution 169-15, we're gonna give them $119,000 more for the Atlantic Street Park?
That was the, that's, that's already been approved. This is just designating who's gonna do the work.
So it brings, it brings the total cost up?
But that was, I mean, am I correct? I think that $120,000 increase was approved at a prior meeting, this is-
That was the order-
But it wasn't the original, the original numbers that were given.
Kathleen, this is, we talked about this at a number of meetings ago. And this is, remember, this is part of what the Alliance was raising money to help us offset this increase?
Okay, and based on-
Tonight, this is not to say we're spending more money. This is just saying we found the person that we're gonna give that money to, correct?
Correct.
That's all this is saying.
The person, who's that?
In other words, we found the landscape architect.
Landscape Dynavest.
They're the people who are gonna get this additional money.
Just assigning the contract to somebody.
Oh, all right.
Not asking to increase the money.
I have, I just, maybe Jason could help me with this. No, it's, yeah, behind the cultural art, the park. Okay, we got a check from the Upper Main Street Alliance, and the amount of $40,000, $15,000 was from San Zari and $25,000 was from Capitaglia Property. Now, on this exciting times, there's a paragraph that says Capitaglia Property Group is committing $50,000 towards the construction of Atlantic Street Park. Where did the other $25,000 go?
First of all, that's a misprint.
Oh, well, yeah.
It is a misprint. He is gonna be contributing more money later, at a later date.
Okay, because I would-
Not right now.
My feelings were from the beginning that he should have paid for this whole thing because it's going to help his project, because he doesn't have a blade of grass on the entire project. So in keeping with that, I would think that was it. The hospital deal, it's sad when we have professionals, but when they're not, they don't have a background of Hackensack. And I appreciate your work, Mr. CPA, but you didn't know all the politics that came with that agreement, with the ambulance and with the coursing guard. And I just wish Kathy were at that meeting, when we could have somebody from Hackensack to sort of bring the structure together, because that's, that's what, that's what happened here. This, those two things were so important to Hackensack people. And the coursing guard, yes, that's the most dangerous intersection in Hackensack. Atlantic Street is an ambulance route, it's one of the main routes that they take to get up north, and a coursing guard is definitely needed there. And that, that's the only thing they gave us when they, when they put that parking garage there illegally. Because it wasn't an answer that they were using, it shouldn't have been there at all. And they gave that to us. And to take it away through negotiation, because they knew you guys knew nothing about it. And it's sad that we don't have people from Hackensack to sit at these meetings to know these two things. They were looking at it at a professional money view, but not looking at it at a resident's view. And no, the residents should not pay taxes, should not pay for this ambulance ride. And it's, it's a done deal, and if it-
No, it isn't, Kathy, it is not.
Okay. It's very, it's very sad, because we don't want to, the hospital takes enough from us. It seems like it is a fear factor, like they bullied you into doing this because you don't wanna negotiate? I don't know. But getting back to the parking garage, it's a commercial property. The rates went up for parking. When they first started it, it was, it was like $3, now I don't know what it is. So they are generating more money from that property. So you can say that it went up because the money it's generating.
This is not paid parking, this is the cancer-
That's a different garage, that's a garage, that's the main-
So nobody pays for parking in this garage?
No, that's the-
Nobody pays for parking in this garage?
It's cancer center and employees only.
It's a free, it's a free garage, even people use it?
It is.
Nobody's paying for it? Okay, and the garage that they are paying for, that because it went up?
This, they do not pay to park in the cancer center garage.
I thought so.
No, that's the part they gave to the city that's totally-
So they are generating, they are generating some funds.
No, that money goes to the city, the part, the part that's muted.
The bottom part that muted.
The 120 spaces that they gave to the city is the city's money. The part that the hospital uses-
So we took the property, we took their parking spaces away from them on Prospect Avenue, and we're making them pay for them at the hospital door?
No, 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 no. Remember, when they took 30 spaces away from the city at the time, on that, whatever street that was.
Prospect Avenue.
They agreed to give the city, they agreed to give 120 spaces in the garage to the city. And that's what is there. The city, right? The city has, the city has 120 spaces, and the money that's collected at those 120 spaces goes to the city, not to the hospital.
But you're making the people pay for it.
The remainder of the cancer center and the employee parking is not, and moneymaker for the hospital. They do not charge for that parking. I know, I'm a patient at the, at the cancer center. When I go there, I go into the parking garage, and I do not pay.
Okay, and we need, we need a roof in this building for 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
May I just, just to piggyback on what Kathy had said, and the value of the air rights, based on the value of the garage, is based on the portion of the garage that's controlled by the hospital?
Correct.
Not the portion of the garage that's controlled by the city?
Correct.
Did you say that again?
The value of the air rights are based on the portion of the garage that's controlled by the hospital, and not the portion that's controlled by the city. That's correct.
And the leases. Mr. Williams.
Good afternoon, Council. Mr. Mayor, I came back because of what I talked to you about a week of, last time I was here. The week I was here, and you said the city manager would get in touch with me? Okay, the city manager, that was happened on the 13th, and that was a week. City manager got in touch with me on the 23rd, I think, or two weeks later, and he asked for the tape, and it was on a Friday, about 4:30 or 4:15. He told me to bring the tape down, and he would talk to me about it, but I said, after he took that long, I wasn't going to bring the tape, and I wasn't going to give it up. I was going to keep it, I'll put it on YouTube. Nobody said, so I didn't bother, because I didn't trust anybody after that happened. And each time I have an incident, what I always do myself is I take my phone, and I dial 911 to make sure that I get service. But whenever the police respond, I'm the villain. They pushes me out, says, get so-and-so out, and I throw my hands up and get out, because I don't want to be beat, or beat down, or create any kind of problem. So this is one thing. And at the same time, when you're talking about the ambulance, I got hit by a car recently, and the ambulance came, and they strapped me down in the stretcher, and they says, well, you got insurance? I said, yeah. I said, well, how much is it going to cost me? He said, $1,100. I said, oh, wait a minute, take this crap off my head, let me get up. I got up, got in my car, and I went to New York, to the Presbyterian Medical Center, because I know I didn't have $1,100, and I know they send me, Hackensack sends you a bill afterward. And the other thing is, uh, the noise. What are we going to do about the noise this summer? Because now the neighborhood is changing, there's people banging music all the time, loud music, three or four o'clock in the morning. The other thing is the building. Now, maybe you don't be around here, but I be around walking the dogs at night. There's so much construction going on, on buildings, and people's putting rooms and doing additions, that's money right there for taxes that we could get, but we don't get it. You put the taxes on the small people, and I see it all the time, and I'm saying, where's the building department? I've seen several buildings that the whole thing was redone, porches, steps, and I remember when I did my porch, my steps, I had to get a permit. But everybody's doing everything now, and nobody does anything about it. The other thing is buses, trucks, everybody's doing business from their house. And when you call the police, and when they go, they get, they don't never write a summons or anything, they say, well, we don't know about it, or why don't you mind your business? It's not that the whole neighborhood has changed. And the other thing is, um, school kids. Now, I see this in fact, and I told you about it one time before, I see people come from New York in school buses, park over by where I am, get out and go around the corner and do what they gotta do, go back, get on the school bus, they exchange ID, and nothing ever happened. And to Mr. Sims, I'm directing this at you personally, why is it you represent, I say the city of Hackensack, but specifically to me, I would say the black population? I never hear you say of nothing about this, only thing I hear you say anything about is sports. And I used to talk to you about certain things, but never, no, I don't see you anymore, because I guess we fell out. But I said to you before, I've been here, I've been here a long time, I just leave and I go back to New York, but you never do anything, you never come by and ask, I've shown you several times, it's different now. But I just, I'm older now, I'm 70, I'll be 76 this year, but I like to live in a little peace, I'm not a hell raiser now, but damn, I like to talk to my councilman and say what's going on. Please, call me, talk to me sometime. When you had a problem with the building department, nobody never came around, you got a new street on Burden Place, nobody knew about it. You paved that street, that's the only street that I know been paved. But there's a lot of other streets, we don't have to do favoritism. And I appreciate it, Council, if you're just looking at a lot of these things I'm saying. I know you're not going to do anything about it, I just become a scapegoat, but I thought this, uh, council would be different. Even like to me, it's the same old, same old. And I'm used to crookedness. I'm in New York, I'm used to seeing everybody get a piece of the pie. And as I said to you before, I don't want you to give me a piece of the pie, just can I lick the plate after y'all finish? You know, I never get around that, but thank you for your time.
Mayor, let me just, I just checked my notes, Mr. Williams came on the meeting of April 20th, and he did say that I called him by April 23rd, so the first date he was incorrect.
All right, noted. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, congratulations, Jase Sohn, on your appointment. How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
I'm good, how are you, sir?
I don't know, you tell me.
I'm doing all right.
All right. That gentleman just made a great point. People talk about things that are going in the city, and it seems like sometimes you're not aware of it. If the gentleman said that that street is in, like, one of the worst streets that needs to be paved, like, y'all should, y'all should know that. Like, do y'all go out into town, do y'all go around?
All the time, sir.
I know y'all don't talk to people, because I've contacted the attorney for this town once, left a message, didn't get a reply, and I emailed the council twice and didn't get a reply. And I brought my concerns, or my campaign to the mayor and council last year, which was in May, this is the fifth month, so let's say six months ago. And in that midst of time, the mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm writing stuff down.
You told me that you would put up that ordinance for a vote.
Absolutely.
Right? Now, I know that for some strange reason, which I would like you to address that, you're not in favor of the ordinance, and that's fine, but you promised me, because those were your words, that the ordinance would come up for the vote. So, when's that going to happen?
Well, it would have happened by now, except the councilperson quit.
Wait, one, two, three, four, five, six. How many people do you need to pass the ordinance?
You only need three, three yeses. So it doesn't matter how many people, as long as you have three yeses.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, so I know that, I know what that means, it was, if we'd have brought up for a vote when to pass, because you wasn't going to vote for it, you wasn't going to vote in favor of it, correct?
What I was trying to avoid, you need, I wanted odd number of people up here. All right, so it's either going to pass, or it's not going to pass. I don't want, I don't want the tie.
Right.
We don't want the tie here. So we now have a new councilperson, and I certainly didn't want to put that responsibility on, on Mr. Sohn on his first meeting, but...
I mean, he just passed it, he just passed the ordinance.
What's that?
He just passed the ordinance.
We're talking about, this is on the smoking ordinance?
No, I mean, he passed the ordinance today, didn't he?
No, on this particular ordinance.
No, I'm just saying, you didn't want to put the ordinance on...
With this, this ordinance from back then, because he wasn't familiar with it, all right, at that time.
He's not familiar with anything, because this is like his second or third meeting.
I understand that.
And you're discussing big things, millions and millions of dollars, if he's going to do the job, he's in it, no matter what, no matter whether you're discussing squirrels, whatever it is. So he's in it. And if I read it right, in the record, no pun intended, you said that, or someone said, the council said that y'all wanted to inject some youth into the council, so here he is, and this ordinance speaks to you, so if anything, you should have had him introduce the ordinance and sponsor it. I mean, you know, if y'all playing, not that you're playing a political game, but you know how politics is, that would have been the smartest thing to do. You should put it in his hands.
I could have...
And if you're not familiar with the ordinance, excuse you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Mayor.
No, I want, I, I want him on this particular ordinance because of, I think it's very important, because I, me personally, I don't even, I still disagree with our own council on this. I think it's preemptive of a state law.
It's not, that's what your attorney's for. The gentleman over there, he told you it wasn't already.
Gentleman over there totally agrees with me, and he's an attorney, so...
Is it preemptive, yes or no?
Yes.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the town attorney. Did you, did you look into it?
We know what our town attorney said, I just said, I disagree with our council. That's, that's my personal opinion.
How you doing, Mr.?
Scrivo.
Scrivo.
Hi.
Is it preemptive, yes or no?
Given the council an opinion that it's not, that it's not improper, that it could do it, and it's up to the council to make that decision. Right.
I think I missed something.
All you're missing is the fact that I disagree with what he said, but I'm not...
Are you an, yeah, you an attorney? That's what, that's what he's for.
I'm not an attorney, but I still believe in, I believe the laws are, are placed, I don't, I don't have to...
What law is in place?
The state law for smoking at 19 years old.
Right, and the municipalities have the right to increase it, they can't decrease...
We also could raise the drinking age, or the age to buy alcohol in this town to 25.
But we're not talking about alcohol, if you're not for it, then say you're not for it, don't...
I don't want to get into this debate, but that's how serious this, this ordinance is to me, all right? Because now we're taking something that doesn't belong in this chamber, in my opinion, belongs in the state chamber, and we're bringing in here to circumvent everybody, people like you and everybody else, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not promoting smoking, but stopping people from going to Trenton and doing it where it belongs. That's my opinion, all right? And I have a very strong opinion on that.
You pass ordinance that affect your residents, not for the state. So, put it up for a vote, like you said you was, and if you don't want to vote for it, then that's fine.
You're telling me to take people's legal rights away.
But listen, when we wake up in the morning, down Main Street, I don't want to drive all the way down River Road to get to where I want to go, but I have to do it, right? Because there's an ordinance that says Main Street is a one-way?
Different type of rights, sir.
I'm saying, well, my point is that there are rights, rules, and regulations that we have to proceed every day just by waking up.
I will, let me promise you this, as we're here, when this whole council meets again, all right, we'll vote on that ordinance, okay?
Thank you.
All five of us. Mr. Sims, unfortunately, is going to be out for a meeting because of surgery, so... Next, please. I said when all five of us are together again. So it won't be the next meeting, it'll be the meeting after that.
Martha, you got to speak into the mic.
Martha Bell, Hackensack. I have some information for you, which I have tried to give three city managers, and when I bring it in there, you know what they say to me? Oh, bring your hand, take it back. I take it back, but it's of essence that you need it. And I think I should give it to the finance, right? Okay, too. And I'd like to know what is 1033? Resolution 151-16. What does that entail?
That resolution, if I may answer, Mayor?
Sure.
That resolution allows the, the police department to look at different government equipment, to see if we could utilize it for the city at, at a cost only to get it here to the city. The following ordinance requires that the city council, and the mayor, and myself, has to approve that before any equipment is accepted from the government.
Okay, and...
Which obviously, that would take an action in, in the public, which then the public would obviously have opportunity to speak on it.
Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, you are a breath of fresh air to Hackensack. There we go, off into trail, trials, and tribulations, but don't change.
Thank you.
Don't change.
Martha, you got to talk into the mic.
You heard me, man.
I did. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now, um, you know, we have a lieutenant, Rice, he also is a breath of fresh air, first, I think. And Howard Williams, he's not here today, but he is a, how should I put it, ma'am? He's an unforgettable in Hackensack, council, the Bergen County, state of New Jersey. Don't leave him out. He is, like I said, an unforgettable, unforgettable. Now, I'd like to say this, I have talked to Mr. Potagium, he has been very receptive. He don't say, oh, I have to go, he hear me out, and he talks. Mr. Sims, I've believed you all my life, I didn't know you, but I do support you. But you never even say boo to our city, all I know is you in that basketball, which you help the children, very good, but it's more behind it than that. You must get some knowledge of real estate, finance, and whatever, because they outnumber you, so you got to get some learning. Now, I want to say, how should I put it now? You, lost my, my train of thought, but nevertheless, I count my blessings, and I name them one by one, and I count my many blessings and see what the Lord has done, right? You all agree?
Yes.
I count my blessings, and I name them one by one. See what the Lord has done. And thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Like I said, I have my place. In order to talk your talk, but I didn't bring them tonight, and I have a lot of, a lot of issues in our area, in our neighborhood. But I've been angry, because I've been duped. But tonight, I said, Martha Bell, you got a lot to think about, you can open your door, take your kids to school, right? And take care of your dogs, right? So I said, Martha Bell, count them, how's your many blessings that the Lord has done? And see what he has done. So leave here, go home, look at the mayor, council people, and count them, so then there won't be no discrepancies in our area and yours. Everything goes up to them out area, nothing comes down in our area, nothing. And you talk about potholes?
You passed.
I'm waiting for one of them firemen, ambulance, or whatever.
Martha, you, we're past your five minutes, dear, I'm sorry.
I know, I see.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Martha, it was good to see you up and about, haven't seen you in a while. Michael Shiner, I have a, a question about the, the ambulance, I know it's under negotiation. Mr. Mayor, if I can ask the city manager, since he's the one handling the negotiation?
Sure, I don't know how much he can answer, because it's in discussion, but...
Is the original, the contract with the hospital for the MS service being renegotiated?
It's being discussed.
Is it being renegotiated?
We're looking for common ground.
All right, so since you're renegotiating the contract, should the contract then go out for bid, because you're giving the, the hospital, as the past administration did, an unfair advantage on obtaining the service, under their specific requirements for the service?
That may happen.
Well, just as we've been down this road before, seven years ago, the city manager at that time in the administration put a no-bid contract... put a no-bid contract out to the hospital for the ambulance. And, Mr. Manager, are you aware of what happened?
Yes, I am.
All right. Perhaps this would be a good time for us to revisit the EMS in the city of Hackensack. Because the level of service that the hospitals provide in the city of Hackensack, nowhere near comes close to the agreement that's supposed to be equal to or better than. The service of the hospital has been slowly been going downhill ever since it began. We have our own dispatchers in the city of Hackensack that are sitting there that should be doing the EMS dispatching, know the city, know the addresses, know the people. If Martha Bell calls up and needs an ambulance... When I was a dispatcher, I used to get Martha Bell's phone call all the time. I knew who Martha was. I knew what she wanted, who she needed to speak to, when she was in trouble, when she didn't sound right. That's what our people know. They know the residents, they know the addresses. Two weeks ago, we were dispatched to a CPR in progress to 308 Prospect Avenue. There is no 308 Prospect Avenue. We went to 380 Prospect, waiting for a confirmation from Mycom. The ambulance pulled into 307 Prospect, we're looking for the address. We went to 380 Prospect to where the patient was. These are the one, when you know that you're sitting and you know the addresses, you know the people, you provide a better level of service. And the service that the hospital's providing is not nearly equal to or better than. At least by a minimum, if we can get the EMS dispatching back to the city of Hackensack where it belongs and where we can provide a better service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick. What are we doing about Machu's property on South Newman Street? Question.
Mr. Tross, did you get a chance to go by and look at that property?
I've called it. I brought up the beatings, everybody knows about it. Cops know about it, state of New Jersey. I turned them in to the construction of state of New Jersey, Trenton.
Has any of those agencies?
More. What are we doing?
Mr. Nick, can I talk? I asked the city manager a question.
The construction department did go out and I did receive a report that there are no current violations. I did go...
That's all I wanted to hear, that, forget it. Forget it. Well, tomorrow, everybody, I hope everybody can come to court. 9:30, room 424. I'm thinking the city planning board and the county and the builder on the Main Street redevelopment project, 170 to 150. And we'll see what happens. I want a stop work order. That is Senator William Mildred Johnson, who was a senator from New Jersey. He was acting governor of New Jersey for three months. He was a postmaster, uh, of the country. He was big donor to the hospital, the library, Johnson Park, the county, the city did absolutely nothing about it. Mr. Dibs, who sits out in the hall, doesn't even come into the meeting tonight because he's got better things to do out there, didn't do nothing about it. He should be canned. He's in charge of Main Street redevelopment. He does absolutely nothing. I want to know who's paying him and it should be coming out of the Main Street redevelopment fund. We've got too much, many people walking around doing nothing. The Main Street redevelopment project, hopefully tomorrow, I'll get a stop work order. We'll get somebody with some brains that can tell a historic building and can evaluate a building in Hackensack. Ever down, this council thinks a senator, acting governor, is a spit in the ocean. I can't believe the disregard this council, Bergen County, state of New Jersey, too, and down to Washington DC, how these things just slide right by. I went to another meeting, they're saving a building that ain't worth a dime. They're like, this guy's gonna spend half a million dollars on it. That just shows you how screwed up this country's becoming. I mean, we are getting so screwed up, it's, I can't even talk half the time. And I go to a lot of meetings all over. I watch, so are you politicians. You vote on things you know nothing about. Everybody's got a dream, we're gonna do this and we're gonna save money. The only way I know about that is taxes. I follow all this stuff after tonight. I really can't tell you what went on tonight. After, I'm gonna go back and read this. But I do know that you gave a development to Ingram, an agreement, the two people that went out, and they said they wouldn't tell me who they were, but fortunately I saw it was on his folder, Ingram. So those were the developers, but I could tell you, they really don't care about the town either because they split. How do you give a development agreement out when Bergen County didn't even sell the property yet?
Go ahead, finish your five minutes and I'll answer the question.
You put out the bids knocking down the court next to the tennis court in Carver Park. Why do you have to knock it down? I read the article in the paper, I don't understand it. And restroom, a slab for a restroom. I don't, can't understand why you're knocking that down. There's plenty of room to put the splash park in there. It's the same malarkey you pull with the greenhouse. This town, and I guess the state in general, that's our old tax appeal attorney leaving. He didn't say nothing tonight either about all the stuff about taxes. That's your public official, that he don't really care about Hackensack either. He's just on a pension. That's what gets me really pissed off.
All right, your five minutes is up, Mr. Nick.
I'll see you, I'll see you tomorrow.
Let me answer your question.
You ask me any question you want.
You, you want to talk about the courts?
Anything you want, mayor. It's a free country.
Court, the, the handball courts are, I don't think they're ever used, or rarely used. They need bathrooms.
I don't even know how you got them to call handball courts.
They need bathrooms.
That's where you hit a tennis racket off.
They need bath-
It's a solid concrete wall.
Mr. Nick, you complained earlier tonight there were no bathrooms at one park. Now we're putting bathrooms in another park and you're complaining that we're putting bathrooms in. So, I don't know where to go. You told me you just go in the bushes.
You certainly remember certain words.
That's you.
You certainly remember certain words.
Did you or did you not complain the bathrooms were locked at Second Street Park? Or Pall-A-Fly Park, sorry, Second Ward Park, I meant.
Well, there's no reason to have a bathroom, it's locked.
Well, because it's early, the park, there's no range or anything there at the time.
What?
There's no range or anything there yet. When schools close, they'll be, but there and the bathrooms will be open.
I piss every day.
I understand that, Mr. Nick.
And it was a nice day, there were kids in the park, okay?
But you're making my point for me. We need a bathroom at Carver Park. We're putting it at an unused handball court, okay?
There are bathrooms at Carver Park.
They're inside of a building and are inappropriate for that.
Oh, wait a minute now. Wait a minute. There are bathrooms at Carver Park.
Lenny, your time is up. Yes, there are bathrooms.
No, my time is up, but you made a statement. How many bathrooms are we gonna put in Carver Park? This is, this is what I'm talking about.
Boys and the girls' room.
Huh?
I guess there's gonna be a boys and a girls' room.
But you have bathrooms there.
I haven't even seen all the plans yet.
Yeah, but you know what? I don't even know where these plans came from. I heard for a splash park for $265,000. Now, I mean, you can take the...
It was three something, it was over three.
Three hundred and something. Now I see, when you're gonna knock down, this is not a handball court. This is a solid, massive piece of concrete that is beautiful. The fence is fine, the cord is fine, there ain't a crack in that concrete.
Okay.
Now we're gonna, I would, that's gonna cost, oh, and I don't need any bathrooms. Talking another, depending what age you hire, it could go another $200,000. Depending where the water and the sewer lines are. And I'm, this is what I'm telling you. Stop spending money. Let's not lean on the tax assessor's dream that in a couple of years, we're gonna be out of the hole because we did this great attempt. I'm sick of all this crap.
Lenny, your time is up. We know, we know that, Lenny, you always are.
And it is crap.
Motion to close?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Potaglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Anybody? Mr. Potaglia?
I have no comments.
All right, I'd just like to talk in summary about the hot topic of the evening, which is the hospital agreement. I just want to...
Lenny, one more, one more time, out. All right? Goodbye, have a nice night.
Never been in agreement with the hospital, never will be in agreement with the hospital. Ask more than, ask Senator Big Goodville about the agreement. They're all gonna go to jail. You guys talk about things that are totally out of whack.
I want to certainly respond to some of the comments that in no way was this agreement entered into with the hospital because of any type of fear factor or any type of bullying. That has absolutely, that had absolutely nothing to do with this agreement. This agreement was entered into by a group of professionals that represent the city. The main goal of these professionals was to act in a fiscally responsible way, a way that they can afford their residents the best and the most, the best agreement that they can, that is a stable agreement, one that can be counted on by the city, one that will show an income stream, an income stream that is profitable, and one that takes into consideration a full risk assessment so that each and every one of these items that were on this agreement had a degree of risk. And that risk has to come into an intelligent decision about where to go and make the best agreement for the city. I think we'd all have to agree that when you pay something upfront that's due over years, there's always a financial incentive in doing so. So we need to take that into consideration. I think I also need you to look at the fact that we were able to take $4 million off of this $30 million tax appeal that's hanging over our head. That's a $4 million that we're saving our residents from having to add to that bond that we're gonna have to pay off in seven years, that increase your taxes as it showed this year. That was another $4 million that we were able to negotiate and remove from that stream. So when we look at this agreement, no agreement is ever perfect. That's what negotiation is about. It's about the city wanting something, the hospital wanting something, and coming together to something that's reasonable for both. And our city officials and the city council agree that this particular agreement satisfies those conditions and is a fiscally responsible agreement for its residents. And I assure you of that. Now, as far as the ambulance service goes, there were, there are some questions about the implementation of the ambulance service agreement. I will be honest with you about that. And we're working that out. This council and this city is committed 100% to its residents that the agreement that was made, that the residents would not be responsible for any, the additional copay that is associated with the ambulance ride. And we are going to promise to you that that is the agreement that we are going to continue to pursue. How that's gonna work and how it's gonna work legally, that was our understanding from the beginning, and that is still our understanding. How we can do that in a legal way and accomplish all of our goals is what we are currently working as partners with the hospital to do. When we have those details worked out, as we shared everything else that we've done with you tonight, we will do that. I want to thank our CFO, our city manager, and our tax assessor for putting their heads together and coming up with this presentation. I think that we were open and honest with you. We shared as much information with you as we could to try and clarify and straighten this out. Not only about the, the hospital agreement, but also about our capital plan. I mean, I think what you see here is you asked for openness and transparency, and that's what you received tonight. You received an open and honest assessment of where we are with our capital and where we are with our Hackensack Medical Center agreement. And I ask you to, to, to please, if you want copies of this, you can certainly review it on the video. If you have questions, we will be here, we'll stay later. The CFO will be here, the tax assessor will be here. Please come forward with those questions and let's try and come to an equitable solution to that. Thanks for coming and thanks for bringing your information. Whether it's information that we agree with or don't agree with, we always are here to listen to what you have to say. Give us that equal opportunity. Come see us afterwards and let's try and iron out some of the misconceptions that may be in the, in the room tonight. Thank you for coming. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
I want to thank Jim Mangle for the presentation, great job. Also, I want to mention last week, we had our annual slam, Sam Dunk the Junk. I want to thank all the groups who participated. Lastly, we had a fire last Saturday. Twelve families were displaced. I want to thank all the organizations that donated gift cards, clothing, food, water, et cetera. And the Mr. Williams and Ms. Bell, you may not know it, or I don't have to show it, but I've spoken to the city manager about certain things that I do see in our neighborhood along with the Fairmount section and the Columbus Park and Lodi Street area. So I am out there watching and doing, doing what I'm supposed to do. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Go ahead, Jason.
Um, I just want to thank everyone who so graciously welcomed me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Nick, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to mention this weekend, I had an opportunity to go out to Newport, Rhode Island, where the Hackensack Honor Guard took first place out of 100 different police departments. And our own Frank Garrett was part of that group. So I just want everybody to, you know, if you can, give him a round of applause and let him know both of our departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the fire, that was, uh... That was a tough fire. I got there at about 4:15, I think the fire started a little after 3:00. Looked like it was under control. Some of the firemen that were there were here tonight. They were doing their best, but all of a sudden, it's an old building, the fire got away from them and the next thing you know, it was blowing out the roof and that was it for that building. It's a shame because it was a beautiful old building. Officer, if you please, Lenny, out.
Out.
Out, out.
It's so deep, stop, man, give me a break. You're not gonna, you're not gonna hack that truck?
Goodbye.
You come here, that building, you know, I mean, I can't take it. That's a beautiful building.
I thought it was a nice building, anyway. Had a, had a thriving, thriving restaurant in it and unfortunately had about 36 residents living in it who were displaced. Like Dave Sims said, a lot of organizations, help churches, United Way, Red Cross. I want to give a special thanks on record to Julia Orlando from Bergen Social Services. She did a great job in organizing a lot of it, gift cards. Father Loffler from St. Anthony's was just invaluable. It was unbelievable how important he was. You know, he's bilingual, most of the people there spoke Spanish. And he was a great help in offering comfort and communicating between the city and, and the residents. But they're still taking donations for those people, I believe, through, I think Julia Orlando has something set up over there, if I'm not mistaken.
She does.
Yes. Berry Street, I agree. I do take it once in a while, it is a bumpy road. We definitely need to go and see if we can fit that into that contract somehow. I want to welcome Jason Sol in his first full council meeting. So, he didn't run out of the room, so that's a good thing. Dave Sims, I gotta tell you something about Dave Sims. Dave Sims, I think, he received a little bit of an unfair criticism tonight. I think he represents his community very well. I see him all over the place. When I go to events in African-American community, Dave Sims is always there. And I go, you know, to them. So I'm, I'm very happy and proud and I know he does communicate the problems he sees, not just in his community, but all over the city, to the city manager. And I thank him for that. This bank, Mr. Nick is no longer here to hear this, but this bank was not on the historic rolls, it's not, it's not historically registered. It had fallen into, it's falling down, basically. The facade was coming off. It had water leaks for, had to be over 10 years. Nothing's been done with that. Nobody's ever tried to do anything with it. And I don't know if it even could be saved. You know, I think to try and stop development based on that building, I think is wrong. I think even Mr. Johnson would agree. Everybody have a safe ride home, it was a long night. Appreciate you coming. Thanks for your comments. You know, take into consideration what we said tonight. There's a lot more to this than, than what you've heard. Have a good night and get home safely. Thank you. Motion to close.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.